We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners' meeting. Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Commissioner McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us bow to the Creator, maker of all mankind. Father, we come this afternoon first recognizing that you're still in control. As we look at the TV and see destruction all over the land, your world is in a chaos. Father, we have food to eat, water to drink, warm bed to lay in, a roof over our head. We have a lot just to say thank you for. That's why we pause this afternoon to request that you look down upon this city commission. Lead us and guide us in the way that you will have us to go. As we deliberate, Lord, let us do it in peace with all mankind as I pray for your name's sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Joe Cessello.
Here.
A quorum has been met.
Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Saying none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is approved. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commissioner. Commissioner Cessello, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Not really any disclosures or anything. As we have our prayers and thoughts for those victims out there in Las Vegas, I'd also like to have you keep in mind our friend of the city, Mac, Mark Carajage. Mark was taken ill over the weekend, and to my knowledge, he was taken to Bethesda Hospital. So keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Mark has been a real friend to the city, a real advocate for the city. His heart is in here to city, so please keep him in your thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus?
I would also second and echo Commissioner's comments. For Mark Carajage, our hearts and prayers are with him and his family and the victims of the Las Vegas shooting. I would also mention that I had a short, brief meeting with John Markey today to discuss certain aspects of Town Square and also some initiatives for affordable and attainable housing here in the city. We've gotten to a lot of detail with that, so I believe we are making some good headway in that direction. So that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Yes, as for the Las Vegas shooting, I remember last year with Pulse, they said that was the deadliest attack in the United States. Now, maybe 15 months later, we have another deadliest attack. I know that Tallahassee does not want municipalities to have any sort of gun regulations, and so hopefully that will be on one of our legislative items to give us control over who can buy and sell guns within city limits. I believe the shooter had over 10 rifles, assault rifles. And I remember back in the 90s, there was a ban on assault rifles, and maybe we can just limit the amount of guns sold. The next... So I have had a busy couple of weeks. We are entered into the Bloomberg Philanthropies Mayor's Challenge, where we are competing against all the cities in the United States to apply for a $5 million grant, number one, first prize, and four $1 million grants, where we've been working hard, and we are going to continue. And I'll get some more information as things develop. On the 22nd, I was shooting with WXEL in PBS South Florida for On the Town on our Ocean Avenue, which is soon going to be our old Ocean Avenue because of all the new developments that are going on. I was walking by it today and saw that they are actually renovating the old high school, and it's just very exciting to see all the new things that are coming into Boynton Beach. On the 23rd, I attended a couple of Hurricane Irma supply drives. And on the 24th, with Rolando Barrero, I drove a full-budget truck, a 16-foot, full of six pallets of supplies, to Marathon, to the city of Marathon, and we dropped it off, and it was really welcomed. And so thank you all for those who donated. I spoke with our Town Square E2L Development Team, attended the United Way's Breakfast of Champions. On the 29th, I spoke to Freedom Shore's 2nd and 3rd graders. They had some amazing questions. Their teachers decided, well, we don't know enough about our local government, so they just called me up and said, can you come? And I said, sure. And so I spoke to them for about an hour about anything, the question they had. That afternoon, I attended St. Joseph's New Park dedication. And today, I was at the Sailfish Cafe for their VIP luncheon. I don't know if anyone's been to that. They have a new management, so it is delicious. Invite everyone to go visit our library and to go to our Sailfish Cafe.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to say that I met with Town Square Development Group. I was out in 20 minutes. Thank you. I don't know if Irma took down the tree from the old high school, or when they went up to do the roof, we'll look at it, but anyway, whoever removed the tree, I want to tell them thank you. I did get a call as well from David Merker. Mark Carajage was readmitted to Bethesda this afternoon. I have no disclosure, and I want to tell the mayor, thank you, that I did attend the MPO meeting in your stand, and it's very interesting and informative. I'm just saying, you know, the rest of the board, if you could ever make one, make one. I'm just saying, well, we think that we're doing really bad here in Boynton. We are way above the rest of the county. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Katz?
I also met with John Markey regarding some of the development in the Cortina area next to Renaissance Commons off Old Boynton, and that's it.
Moving on to announcements.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I don't see it here on the agenda, but are we going to talk about the having a final discussion on the placement of the police department tonight? Location?
You want to do a motion for reconsideration of the agenda and put a new business item up there?
Yes, if you would, please. I thought it was on the agenda.
No, okay.
I'd like to make a motion, reconsider the agenda, put on the agenda, the discussion about having a final say, a vote, where the police department, location of the Boynton Beach Police Department building.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. All right. Put that as Item 12D.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay. Is there any further informational items? Moving on, may I have the announcement of the Community Redevelopment Agency's 6th Annual Boynton Beach Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash? All right, well, it is on October 21st and 22nd, and there are some flyers in the background, in the back of the room. I invite everyone to attend. It is a free event, and if it's anything like last year, it's going to be amazing. Next, will Elizabeth Stevens from the Lighthouse for the Blind come accept the proclamation of October 15, 2017, as White cane safety day?
To the Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the white cane, where every blind citizen of our, in our city, has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Florida law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach and our business community, with the cooperative assistance of the Lighthouse for the Blind of the Palm Beaches, can look forward to a continued expansion of employment opportunities for and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2017, as White cane safety day.
Would you like to say something?
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this proclamation. The white cane is truly a symbol of independence for those with vision loss, and we really applaud the city for making the community more aware of white cane users. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for National Arts and Humanities Month. Would Kim Weiss please come down to accept the proclamation?
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organization communities in states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for over 30 years. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American and play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. And whereas the nonprofit arts industry also strengthens our economy by generating $135 billion in total economic activity annually, $22.3 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 4.1 million jobs. And whereas since October 5, 2005, the city of Boynton Beach adopted and supported its Art in Public Places program, and through the guidance and authority of the Arts Commission, has consistently recognized the importance of this industry. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2017 National Arts and Humanities Month.
On behalf of the Arts Commission, I'd like to thank the commissioners and the mayor for supporting the arts program. And I don't know if anybody's noticed today, but are you old enough to remember the song "16 Tons and What Do You Get"? Maybe you don't, but anyway, it was a very famous song. Well, we have 16 tons of artwork on the avenue. Thanks to Debbie Cole's debate, that is a very, very exciting program that's going to be going on all year. And it was on WPBF this afternoon, and I think that you could find it on Facebook or on their website. Debbie was interviewed, and so we have five artworks going up, and it's going to encompass the entire year, and it really could put Boynton Beach on the map in a way, a much bigger way. So it's gigantic artwork with a gigantic impact, and we thank you for supporting the arts.
I'd just like to make a comment, and that was that I witnessed Debbie Cole's debate and the big 18-wheeler taking off the art. And Debbie, I think it'd be wise if you put on a vest or something, since you're going to direct traffic. I'm just saying, you know, just want to be kind of on the rim of, you know, not having an accident. You was in the street. Thank you.
Moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is William R. Swiner. I live at 2701 Southwest A Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm a little concerned. I've lived here in Boynton since 1974, basically in the same Chapel Hill area. 2004, we had two hurricanes, Francis and Jean. I remember them very well. My daughter got married in between both of them. And at that point in time, a lot of damage, a lot of debris and stuff like that, but that debris was picked up within a week. Jean came along again, about a week, week and a half. Wilma came through in '05, and within a week, week and a half, the debris was gone. I understand that FEMA has done some things a little different now, and that the city is looking to be reimbursed for vegetation collection, and that they use contractors from out of state or around the state to do this pickup. Well, the ones that came and picked up the tree that was pretty much destroyed across the street from us, my wife went out and was thanking them for doing it. It wasn't our house, it was across the street. And she walked back to the car behind it and had this, two guys sitting in it who claimed to be their bosses, and had this funny aroma coming out from what they were smoking, and I don't believe it was made by any cigarette manufacturers. It was more of a different substance. So that was just a little concern there. Now we have, basically, four Tuesdays have gone by. Our trash collection is Tuesday, our garbage collection is Tuesday and Friday in Chapel Hill, and recycling on Fridays, and then bulk on Tuesdays. We've had four Tuesdays. I understand that the FEMA is only for vegetation pickup, and I would like to know who's responsible for fences, bags of garbage, bags of debris, sinks, chairs, couches, patio furniture that's been put out for pickup and stuff. I drive different sections, different areas through that neighborhood daily, going to and from work. It's still there. This is four weeks. So if we look at the, as a 2016 fourth quarter, there are approximately 24,000 residential or family units in Boynton Beach. According to that same report, 46% are single-family. Their charge is, you're going to let me go on this one. There's $16 charged per month for trash collection, of which $1.25 is for recycling.
Sir, you need to wrap this up, please.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if you take that, you have $1,475 left. Let's make it 15 divided by 3. Two garbage collections and one bulk, basically five bucks. You take 46% of 24,000, let's call it 11,000. 50% would be 12,000. So you've got 11,000 times 5, that's $55,000 a month the city of Boynton is collecting. Citizens are paying, and it's not getting the service. As a business owner, if I didn't provide the service, the people would look for the money back. It's $55,000 a month.
Thank you.
I would like to know what the commission is going to do about it. And I'll be back up. I'll go back in line again, because I have another one.
Sir, sir, could I ask you a quick question? These people that you saw smoking whatever, were they city employees, or was this a contractor picking up, a contractor? So it wasn't a city employees?
Sir, can you go in front of the podium?
Take it to the microphone.
I'm sorry. They were with a contractor. They had Tennessee license plates on their car, and my wife talked to them, and she said they were basically the supervisors for the contractor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Swiner, you know, Mr. Livergood can probably get with you and let you know what is going on. I'm just saying, because I have the same problem in District 2. Nice to see you again. I'm just saying, because there were some things I did not know that was going on, and he will answer your question. I'm just saying, because it was amazing. I was amazed as well.
Mr. Livergood and I have been talking. He met with me in my park, Forest Hill Park, and things are really moving along as far as straightening it up. I would like Christina, maybe, to meet me in the park one day to go over it. It's your district.
Absolutely. Anytime. And what I will add, in addition to your comments about the timeframe that it's taken to pick up the vegetation, this isn't a Boynton Beach issue. It's not as if Boynton Beach has been forgotten. I've driven from Miami to Broward to Palm Beach. Everyone is still waiting for vegetation to be picked up. It's a slow-going process, so I just want you to understand that this is not just a Boynton Beach issue. It's all over South Florida. Right. Absolutely, and that's what Jeff will help you understand in terms of the timing and when it will be picked up, because we're all still on the same boat. Thank you.
Good evening. David Katz, 67, Midwood Lane. At the end of the August 1 Commission meeting, Commissioner Cessello, in a microburst of extreme but sincere disappointment, requested that a future agenda item be added to discuss if registered lobbyists should be able to serve on city advisory boards. He later chose to have the item removed. Thereafter, Mr. Grant added the item back on the agenda, hoping to have it discussed tonight. To his obvious discontent at the September, excuse me, the September 19 meeting, the rest of the commission, by a vote of 4 to 1, voted to remove the item altogether. So I wondered, Mr. Grant, were you actually concerned about conflicts? I don't think so. Were you worried about perceived conflicts? I don't think so. Your motives were blatantly personal, directed at me. I called five cities, the town of Jupiter, Village of Wellington, Boca, Boynton doesn't have it, Boca Raton, and City Lake Worth. They have no rules regarding precluding anybody serving on a city advisory board who's registered as a lobbyist. I also got from the county a list of 188 names of people who are registered to lobby the city of Boynton Beach. Then I got a list from the city clerk's office of everybody who serves on the city board. There's only one name that crosses. That's mine. I have maintained and followed all required registrations under the county ordinance to ensure full disclosure and transparency. In the last three years, I have registered four times and one additional time when it was not required. That's only one time since you've been on the commission, Mr. Grant, not exactly a full-time lobbying job. There are sufficient measures in place to guard against conflicts at the advisory board level, as well as the city commission level. And I think someone on the dais should give Mr. Grant a set of keys to play with, so that the rest of you can address the important issues confronting our city. Because again, Mr. Grant, I'd rather be known occasionally as a lobbyist than as a plagiarizer. Thank you.
Before you go, there's two aspects of it. One was the Robert Rules of Procedure, because we all agreed to have that on the agenda item, and I didn't feel that Commissioner Cessello could unilaterally take that away. That was one aspect of it. And yes, I do feel that if you are supposed to be impartial on an advisory board, accepting money from a corporation as a lobbyist may go into a conflict of interest. However, no one else from the commission thinks so, and so we are moving on. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Debbie Lydell, 1008 Ocean Drive, Boynton Beach. First, I will thank the Public Works Department for the awesome job they're doing picking up debris, not so much the trash. Today, I presented an impromptu survey on a Facebook page called Boynton Beach Raw, and my first post was, let's discuss the assets of the city of Boynton, things they're doing well, parks, streets, restaurants, shopping. I got 23 responses. The people seem to like the breweries, the beach, Sunshine Square Shopping Center, retirement communities, the marina, the Two Georgias, Banana Boat. I then posted another post on, what would you call Boynton Beach's flaws, hiccups, mistakes, or problems? I got 153 comments on that. I guess this is kind of a little report card from your citizens that unfortunately, Facebook is a forum for a lot of comments, but they don't seem to attend our meetings and have a real voice. So the complaints were the size of the buildings in downtown, the amount of the density in buildings in downtown. They wanted restaurants and stores and tourism in downtown, not so much housing. They complained about the mall being a dead spot in the city and needs revitalization. Unfortunately, the CRA doesn't cover that district, so I think the city needs to address that in a new way. The most popular thing at the Boynton Mall is Christ Fellowship Church. It seems to be thriving out there. I work at the coffee shop twice a week, and I will say, I haven't seen a single commissioner Another complaint was panhandlers and trash on I-95 on Boynton Beach Boulevard. It's an embarrassment to come into the city. There's no revitalization being done there. And they just kind of felt like city officials do not listen to the residents, and the morale is kind of low. I would suggest the city hall move to the Boynton Beach Mall and put a satellite office in the library that you want to demolish. And go ahead and demolish downtown and do your revitalization in downtown, but I don't think we need a multimillion-dollar building. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And before you go, the numbers are, you know, one-sided in the sense that there's 150 people, you said, that made comments on Facebook?
A little over 150.
Out of the 6,800, correct, that are actually on Boynton Beach Raw? So...
Well, this was only 10 hours of a survey, so, you know, it was just a little impromptu thing.
And so that's, I'm going to take it as that over 6,600 people didn't feel to put anything that there was any hiccups going on. So I do appreciate all the people that did respond, and we'll take a look at it. But, you know, there's a lot of people that are happy with it, and, you know...
Well, there were other posts than mine that also got added to it. So just take a look.
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
Very good.
And we did have a satellite office once upon a time in the Boynton Beach Mall. I don't know the reason for closing, but we did have one.
Well, my name is Karen Reinhardt, and I live at 424 Southwest 7th Avenue. I've been a resident of Boynton Beach for 20 years, and I have a, I like what this gentleman, the first gentleman, said about the garbage pickup. Now, this is not, this has been going on before the hurricane, not after the hurricane. In my neighborhood on 7th Avenue, you could drive down it on any garbage, before garbage day. We had rules and stuff in Boynton. I remember when I first lived here, we had code enforcement. We got away with that. We have something called community service, which is not getting anything done. I have a family next to me that, there are 11 people living in this home. One family lives in a laundry room with no running water. They wash their dishes in the rainwater in Tupperware. Now, you cannot tell me that this is not a hazard to our city. Nothing gets done about it. I have called...
Continue to speak in the mic, please.
I have called the community service. Nothing gets done. Behind me, there are 50, 55-gallon drums of water just standing behind in my house. I am a single person. I own my home, and I struggle paying my bills, but I make sure that my house is clean. I make sure that I take care of my property. Now, I have been fined before from the city of Boynton from code compliances, and it was my fault. I had had renters that weren't taking care of it. But I don't see anything getting done in this city. Nothing. I mean, 7th Avenue is like a trash dump, and it's not because of the hurricane. It's because nobody knows when you're supposed to put your trash out anymore. Nobody knows when you're supposed to get your recyclables put out. I mean, these are things that as a property owner, you should know, and I don't know how this city is going to get back to where it used to be, but really, something needs to be done, because, I mean, it's really not fair to people paying the taxes that we can't get city workers to pick up garbage, number one, around the city. That's not just in our garbage cans. You go walk down on 4th Street where the 95 wall is, there is garbage like you wouldn't believe there. Right now, there's four tires, five tires out there. I walk my dog along that street every day. It is a disgrace. Now, the hurricane. We have not one single street light working on Southwest 7th Avenue. I've called FPL. Nothing, you can't even get FPL to make a response. I don't know. I'm very saddened about this. I even have contacted Mayor Grant, and, you know, I was really disappointed on what you emailed me back. But that's okay, because I'm here as a citizen, paying, who pays taxes, that deserves to get some answers about what's going to happen in this city. Thank you very much.
Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest 2nd Street. The Florida League of Women Voters Initiative to Increase Solar Rooftops Across the State of Florida comes to Palm Beach County and begins with a press conference November 1 at 10:30 a.m. at the Pine Jog Environmental Center. We would like to invite the members of the Boynton Beach City Commission to this press conference. West Palm Beach Mayor Jeremy Muo will be the primary speaker, and short comments from all politicians in attendance will be appreciated. Two informational meetings have been scheduled for citizens interested in purchasing photovoltaic solar systems. The first meeting is Wednesday, November 15 at 6 p.m. at the Boynton Beach City Library. The second meeting is Monday, December 4 at 6 p.m. at the County Vista Government Center. Center. The value of being a member of the Solar Co-op is an estimated 20% reduction in costs because of bulk buying and more efficient scheduling. Secondly, the co-op helps pick a preferred installer, avoiding a lot of the angst. The co-op is scheduled to be in existence for five months. I believe 2,000 to 3,000 homes so far have had solar installed across the state because of the league initiative. For further information, please contact me.
Linda Contreras, address is 1743 North Congress Avenue in Boynton Beach. Greetings to you, Mayor Grant, and to your entire leadership team. Mr. Grant, we had the pleasure of meeting you at a previous commission meeting. You took the time to meet us. We appreciate that. As you remember, I am an adjunct professor at Florida Career College, and I stand on behalf of the U.S. citizens of Puerto Rico, on behalf of the students that are here with me today, on behalf of my supervisor, Tamika Morris, and our campus president, Scott Schaefer. As a professor, I am teaching my students about Level 5 Leadership. It's a leadership theory based on research, which proves that the best leaders are the ones that have the ability to demonstrate humility. Based on this theory, I am teaching my students the art of service, of being a servant, and the true meaning of duty. It is with this theory that we are moved to help our fellow U.S. citizens in Puerto Rico. As you all may know, some of the latest facts of the current situation in Puerto Rico include facts such as 55% of Puerto Ricans currently do not have access to clean water, 14% of the cell towers are operating, 5% are without power, I'm sorry, 5% are with power, sorry, and 721 of the 1,100 gas stations are open. Because of this, many of our fellow U.S. citizens in Puerto Rico cannot receive the medical attention needed to live due to not having power, not being able to call for help, and/or many of them will have if they do not already have declining health due to not having clean water and having a lack of food. As an educator within a business program, I take the crisis in Puerto Rico as an opportunity to teach my students about the true meaning of service, being a servant, humility, and stepping into a duty under the nonprofit business model. If I haven't taught them this, I personally feel as an educator that I haven't taught them anything. With this said, we would like to have a fundraising event, which would include food and entertainment on October 28th at the Florida Career College located on Congress Avenue here in Boynton Beach, and we are asking for the city's support in any way possible, whether it be funding so that we can buy food, decorations, or hire a band, or perhaps the city can help us market this event, or perhaps you all have other suggestions as to how we can support our U.S. citizens in Puerto Rico. We would be extremely grateful. That's all that I have to say, and I'll introduce my student, Olivia Lang. Thank you.
It's a new three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Lang. Address is 1743 North Congress Avenue, Boynton Beach. It is a privilege and honor that I have the opportunity to speak on behalf of our brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico. I'm also speaking on behalf of my classmates seen here, that are present here today from Florida Career College. As students, especially business students, it is important to receive hands-on experience in fundraising. With learning hands-on skills in fundraising, we will also know how to raise money within a business setting, which in turn will allow us to give back to Boynton Beach. As students, we humbly ask for your support in any way, because it is with your support that we will be helping our Puerto Rican community who are dying every day, and you will be also helping students learn the skills that will benefit us all.
Yes, before you go, can you give your contact information to Eleanor, who's in the back table, so we can get in touch with you? No, you can't talk, only in front of the podium.
Good evening. My name is Tom Spatafora, and I live in Palm Beach, West Palm Beach, Lejeville. I do not know if this is the right time, right place, to discuss what I would like to bring to the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, and commissioners, a couple of weeks ago, in fact, I have the paper at home, the Palm Beach Post. This subject is very close to my heart. I have a brother that I never met, okay? He was killed by an automobile driver back in Missouri, where I was born. Getting right to my point, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if it's fresh in your minds, this man, a male nurse, had just finished his shift at the hospital. I don't know where he was, okay? The paper didn't specify exactly where he was. He left his shift. He made a right-hand turn. He went to a right-hand turn lane, and he was going rather fast, and he hit and killed the people in this vehicle, a husband and wife, young husband and wife. Does anyone here know what I'm talking about right now? Thank you. Like I said, I'd like to get right to the point, so I'm a little nervous right now, so bear with me, please. EMS arrived at the scene, and that fellow was complaining about pains. I feel sorry for him, but I really mean this when I say this, and I discussed it with a couple of officers right here in Boynton Beach. They administered a shot to kill his pain, which I think, number one, was wrong. Number one, I feel they should have taken a blood sample first. He was not going to die immediately. Take a blood sample first to see if he was under the influence of anything. However, they gave him a shot, and that unfortunately ruined the case, okay, in a sense. I'm trying to find the correct word. The doctors could not determine if indeed he was under the influence or not, because when they drew blood to verify this, they could not prove beyond a shadow of a doubt if it was the medication that they administered to him for killing the pain, or if indeed he was under the influence. I'd like to make a suggestion. Now, I'm not being judge and jury here, so please forgive me. I feel this way, if that man or that woman is breathing and his life is not in danger, I say please, take a blood sample first. I would suggest to the supervisors of whoever these people are, the first responders, whoever they might be, draw blood first. Now you have it. Then whatever they want to do to alleviate its pain, I can understand that. But please, if this takes the supervisor of that department to issue that order to these EMS, draw blood. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, your three minutes are up. You don't... Talk to Eleanor, she'll get your information and forward it to us. All right, moving on to administrative. We have one appointment, and it is actually Mark Care George for the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I would like to nominate him, and hopefully it brings a smile to his face that we're thinking about him, and we're looking forward to him to come back and helping the city out.
Second.
All those in favor, states so by saying aye.
Discussion, Mayor?
Okay.
That is further on down the agenda. I think we're going to be talking about this particular advisory board, and if we're going to continue to have it or discontinue it. So you might want to hold that before we have that discussion? Just a suggestion?
No.
No.
So, well, actually, I'm supposed to call for someone else to nominate in a second. Or I'll pass it to Vice Mayor. So I'll nominate Mark Care George for the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, consider approving a request from E2L Holdings to assign payment associated with Phase 1 agreement to Dougherty Funding LLC.
Mayor, I think I can handle that. This was a request that came from E2L to request the city to consent to an assignment of their contract for Phase 1 to Dougherty Funding LLC, which is a lender, if you will. Apparently, E2L was looking for funds in hand to begin to pay a lot of the development team that's been working on the Town Center project, and E2L, as the lender, wanted to make certain that if there was a default under the loan document, that they would have the option to inherit, not the obligation, but the option to inherit the rights of E2L and the contract that it has for Phase 1 with the city. If they were to exercise that option, we would be dealing with Dougherty Funding LLC or their assignees to continue to perform the work under the contract that E2L would otherwise do. It is possible as well that Dougherty Funding would not exercise its right to take over the contract, but would allow E2L to continue to perform under the agreement, notwithstanding the default under the loan agreement.
Jim, just some information. So what we're actually doing is lending this money to get Phase 1? Is that correct?
We are consenting to, a third party lending the money to E2L.
Okay.
In exchange for allowing that third party to inherit the contract if they want to, if there's a default on the loan.
Okay, so if this contract goes off the rails, for whatever reason, what happens? What's the city's liability?
We still have recourse under the agreement itself in the event of a default. At the current time, we have no monetary obligation until the completion of Phase 1 and the election of rights to continue with other phases, so nothing changes with respect to the rights of the city.
Thank you.
I have motioned. Any further discussion? Seeing...
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Moving on to consent agenda, is there any item that someone wished to pull? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next, item 12A, approve the right-of-way dedication of seven and a half feet of property along the southern property boundary of the property located at 711 North Federal Highway to the city of Boynton Beach as approved by the Community Redevelopment Agency on August 8th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next, I've requested to discuss the possibility of a resolution by the city in support of the development of a boat lift at the C-51 canal. President Pro Tem of Lake Clark Shores, Robert Chalhoub, is here to discuss.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chalhoub. I'm the president pro tem of Town of Lake Clark Shores. It's very interesting to watch another government in action, so I think you're all doing a good job, so it's entertaining. If you haven't heard about the intercoastal C-51 access, I'm surprised. The concept was developed approximately four years ago, and that's to allow intercoastal access along a chain of lakes. There's five chains of lakes, and it comprises approximately 23 miles along the intercoastal, but there is no access to the salt water, to the intercoastal. The spillway between West Palm Beach and Lake Worth is the prime location for this intercoastal access. We went to Tallahassee two years ago when we were able to obtain financing and the amount of $287,000 for the engineering and design. That's been completed. We have gone to the Board of County Commissioners through our Commissioner David Kerner to seek a line item request of approximately $25,000 as seed money to make an application for the permitting process. In communications with Commissioner Kerner, that has been successful. So now what we're trying to do is to develop the application process, and we need to have an entity sign the application. The South Florida Water Management supports this. The Palm Beach County League of Cities endorsed this and passed a resolution. 15 municipalities have also passed resolutions supporting this. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council issued a feasibility study in January of 2015. January of 2015 suggested that if this intercoastal access goes through, you will have ad valorem increase in property revenue for Palm Beach County of no less than $30 to $75 million annually. I did not misspeak. $30 to $75 million annual increase. This is the biggest economic boom that's hit central Palm Beach County in decades. We believe it's going to be an economic engine that encourages economic development up and down the intercoastal, and also West Palm Beach, Lake Worth. I come from Lake Clark Shores, which is immediately west, and all of the municipalities on the chain of lakes has a vested interest in the success of this. Welcome in an opportunity to answer any of the questions or concerns you may have.
Robert, what size boat does this, can this lift actually handle?
No more than 23 and a half foot. The height is approximately five and a half feet from water level to canopy. Approximately 80% of all the boats that are registered in Palm Beach County will be able to access the intercoastal with those statistics.
Robert, my question is, besides the city of Boynton, how many cities have not signed on?
Have not signed on? We have 39, 15 did, approximately 24. I went to the University of Florida.
Signed on, okay. Yeah, I remember when this came up some time ago, when this was brought to this commission prior, I don't know if I was sitting here or not, but, you know, we was in favor of it, and what would the lift be placed? I'm just saying if we sign on...
One more time?
Where would the lift be placed?
The lift will be placed on the north side of Lake Worth. It's referred to as Spillway Park. An interlocal agreement will have to be entered into with the South Florida Water Management and the city of Lake Worth and Palm Beach County. Mayor Trilio has supported this concept and wants to have the county undertake full responsibility for the project.
Our next question is staging of boats would not be a problem. I'm just saying the trailers?
You can't access it. It's going, you're going to have to get in the queue, as they say.
Okay, the queue, okay. I don't have a problem.
There will be also water, non-motorized access.
So canoes and paddle boarding?
That's correct.
And I guess also sea doos and jet skis?
Are not contemplated at this time.
Okay. You know, I'm for this. Basically, you know, we are on the chain of lakes, and we have intercoastal property, so one of the things I stated was that now Lake Clark Shores can take their boat to Two Georges and Banana Boat and Prime Catch.
Looking forward to it.
One of the other things is that moving forward with Boynton Beach is that with this in place, the county that owns a couple of the bridges over the chain of lakes will hopefully raise them so that we can get more boats passing through that, because I've heard from a couple residents that sometimes at high tide, you can't go it under. And so that's kind of where I'm at, is that this is definitely a benefit to the county, it's a benefit to the cities, and that we are increasing the blue ways for Palm Beach County.
I have some flyers, if I may approach, Mayor.
And I guess I'll also open it to the public if anybody from the public has any questions. All right, seeing none?
Thank you very much for your due consideration.
Thank you.
May I be excused?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Second.
All right.
You just brought two or three flyers?
Yep, just two.
Pass it down.
All right, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Number 16.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
All right, moving on to the discussion relating to the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals Board asked to establish duties and future. And Jim Ward.
Well, I'm not certain what the issue was with respect to this particular board. The backup includes the provisions of the local, that's city of Boynton Beach, local amendments to the Florida Building Code, which describe the responsibilities and scope of authority of the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. That board was originally created pursuant to the, one of the previous building codes, which has now evolved into the Florida Building Code, and it's been in place for, I'm not exactly sure how long, but quite a long period of time. It meets infrequently. It meets only when there's a... It meets only when there's a specific appeal, as described in the terms of the code provision that you're looking at, challenging an interpretation of the building official or a city administrator.
Jim, to your knowledge, how many times have they actually met? Let's give me, the last two years, let's say?
Well, better, yeah, give it the 20 years that you've been here.
You can't remember that far back.
Well, I would say in the last few years, they probably have met two or three times.
And is it, but before, when the building code was different, did they meet more frequently?
I think that's true, yes.
Do you potentially see an influx, or I guess I see Andrew coming down, in the viability of this group here?
Andrew Mack, Director of Development, as respect to, as far as they met since I've been working for the city nine years, they've met probably maybe 10, 12 times. And specifically, it's in related to items that are being appealed as part of their due process through the Building Department or through business tax. So this is a part of our due process for any of our applicants or customers.
Go ahead.
Andrew, let me ask you a question. Since you said due process, do you feel like this board is a viable asset to the city?
Well, I have one of my favorite board members, Beverly, was on the board, so, I mean, I think the idea that they meet infrequently is sometimes a good thing, because a lot of people, they do want to give back, but they don't want to be something that's here every month, or, you know, so they're able to be a part of the city and give back, and they come on an as-needed basis. So sometimes infrequency is not a bad thing. We need them to help give the community a voice in what we're doing. We have contractors, you know, Beverly's an attorney, so it's a good mix of volunteers on that board that give advice to, you know, that make a ruling for our customers, so.
So Andrew, if somebody comes before this board with an appeal, this board is an advisory board, correct?
Correct.
And they listen to the appeal, and then they make some type of judgment, pro, you know, con for it, and then where does that go to? Back to you or back to this commission?
That goes, that's the final judgment, that their next recourse would be to appeal it to the courts.
All right, so this advisory board has final say?
Correct.
This is nothing to do with redundancy? We're not duplicating any other boards or procedures?
Correct, correct. I think something that's typical, like the building official can only give a certain amount of extensions on a permit or a type of application. So when typically, those are something that would come to the board that if they wanted to extend a permit for, like, when we had the economic downturn, they had times where they extended the permit like six months or a year, to give that contractor time to complete the project, or to at least, you know, until the economy turned. So those are typically items, or if there was an item that where Shane, the building official, current building official, was interpret the code as one such, there's a way for them to bring it to a board that they could interpret the code or give them advice as far as what they feel was to be an acceptable alternate method to comply with the code. So these are the type of things that we use it for our benefit as well. So it's not just due process. If there's something that is gray, or that we can bring it to the board and they can, in using the board to advise on how to resolve it.
So in your opinion, they provide a viable service in?
I do, I do. I think the mix of the board is very good too, as well, so.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion that we continue with this board unless somebody want to go further discussion.
I have a question before we continue. If I could just get some clarification from Judy, our city clerk. I'm seeing some, I apologize. Quinn Esther is here. If you could just clarify, I'm seeing two different sets of numbers. On our online agenda, it says five regular positions filled and one alternate, but on our physical agenda, it says three regular positions open and two alternates. So I'm just, are the positions filled or not?
Sorry about that. I'll answer, because I talked to Judy about this. So the board is made up of five regular positions and two alternates. Presently, out of those five and two, five of the regular positions are filled and one alternate position is filled. So there's one alternate that's vacant right now.
So the information on the
Maybe worded.
Physical agenda is wrong.
Is it on the cover sheet?
Yes.
So it says the board has five regular positions and two alternates. Currently, there are five regular positions filled and one alternate position filled.
Right. But on the physical agenda, it says Building Board of Adjustment Appeals, three regulars, two alternates, as if these positions are open and need to be filled.
Oh, okay, that is a misprint. Sorry about that.
That's what I needed to understand. Thank you.
I apologize.
So the appointment of Mr. Carridge tonight would be to an alternate slot, the way it reads?
The alternate. I believe it's an alternate position, right? Thank you.
It's supposed to be regular.
There is a discrepancy here.
Yeah.
I'll work with Quinn Esther and Judy on that.
I know there was a discussion of one regular resigning off of it, so it may have, timing-wise, it may have been that Marx came in when she resigned, so I may have picked up the wrong number when I did mine.
Yep. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
To the Assistant City Manager, I'm just saying as quick as you can get that, you know, finalize and get the correct information to us, please.
Yep.
Thank you, it's my motion, okay.
And Commissioner Casello.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've been having discussions about this town square project and the layout of the project itself, and two of our public safeties buildings need to be relocated, the fire station and the police department. We've come upon a location for the fire department, which I agree with, and past commissioners had purchased land up on High Ridge Road to put Station 5 in a future police station. Well, in my opinion, things have changed over the years, and what was probably maybe a good idea back then, I don't think it's a good idea now. And why I say that is that, in my opinion, I think that police departments, police headquarters should be located in the communities that they're going to serve the most, do the most good. And any city that I've ever visited or attended, the police stations were always, the headquarters were always in the downtown area. And my suggestion is that this High Ridge parcel has now become valuable. And I can tell you with a degree of certainty, without naming names, there's three businesses that would put an offer in next week for this property for millions of dollars. One is a hotel, one is a Wawa, and the other one is a fresh food restaurant, market to table. These people want to sit down and negotiate for this property, pay top dollar for it. I believe that it would be a tax-producing parcel. And, you know, we need to grow the city's tax base if we are to sustain the services we provide. With the police and fire taking up about 68% of our general fund, it doesn't leave really too much wiggle room to do some of the other projects we're trying to do here in the city. I believe, and my idea, I talked to, you have in front of you a little map here, the CRA district, and so the question is, well, where would you suggest that we put the police department? I think some of our previous discussions, I think there was a few commissioners who would agree that the police department needs to be here on the east side of the city. I think that common sense would tell you that. I think in the heart of heart, that that'd be the right location to put it. One of the suggestions was that we put it next to the fire, the new fire station that's going up, but there's some logistics with that particular parcel, not enough, not enough square foot area to put a building there. So I had, went down and had a little discussion with Mike Simon, and I know we just recently put a RFP out and was accepted to put some affordable housing, workforce housing, down there on Seacrest, and I agreed that with 100%. But we also have a parcel of land, just stone's throw from there, which we call the Cottage District, which we recently put out a RFP, and to our dismay, no one actually submitted a proposal for that. My idea on this here is that we reconsider the location. I know that High Ridge, you know, this administration, well, we don't want to gum up the works of town square. We don't want to, you know, throw a wrench, monkey wrench into the, into the works. Well, I disagree with that. I think as commissioners here, it's incumbent upon us to think a little bit outside the box. And I can't think of anything more productive than having that police headquarters located in this general area here to serve the community that needs to be served. You know, we talk about development on MLK Boulevard in the heart of Boynton itself, and Commissioner McCray, you've said it numerous times, that we've been talking about this for 20 years, for the last 20 years. And my argument, respectfully, would be that we are never going to develop the MLK corridor unless the good people of the heart of Boynton and in the live in that area feel safe and comfortable. And 99.9% of the people that live in that area now are good people. They deserve the comfort and security that we can provide. And my suggestion is that we reconsider that High Ridge area that would be a tax-producing for the next 20 years. That tax money would go directly to the city. It's not something we'd have to share with the CRA, which is a good thing. And that we consider other sites. And the other site is like where the cottage areas, and if we really want to think outside the box a little bit, maybe we should think about where the post office is now. What better location for a police headquarters than there? Have that on one corner and our fire station on the other corner protecting the, our new downtown area. I think it's incumbent that we keep the police department here on the east side, and I would like to have the commission at least consider this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Since I represent District 2, I'm just saying it was stated that the community that need to be served, I kind of take offense with that. I've been challenged a lot of times by Commissioner Casello saying that I represent the entire city of Boynton. First of all, I do represent the entire city of Boynton, and that community needs to be served. It could be served from any place that we place the police headquarters. I'm not in favor of the Cottage District, number one, because we will be uprooting citizens who already have homestead there. The next thing is that when that land was purchased, prior to, you're even probably coming to Boynton, even thinking about it, you might have was here, sir. I was serving up here, and we promised the citizens of Boynton when we bought that land, I know you want your Wawa, whatever kind of else you want to put over there, that that was what we was going to let that be called. It was going to be called, that haven over there was going to be called the Fire and Safety Department for the city of Boynton. It was good then for getting across 95. It is still good. I don't care where you want to move it, but please don't ever make the statement again that for the people that they serve, that means that you're kind of throwing shade, sir, that District 2, we need the police department more than anybody else. And I take offense, we do not. We all need the police department here in the city of Boynton.
Well, I respectfully would argue with you, Commissioner, that when a decrying statistics show that we need more police presence in there, that's a fact. That's not something I'm talking out of my hat on. You know, when a mother can be shot down in a convenience store in broad daylight with 15 people standing around and no one sees anything, or when three people can be shot on a Saturday afternoon on Fourth Street and no one sees anything, and when our newly business on MLK has to lock their restrooms because of drug people going in there shooting, overdosing in their restrooms. So I would, I would argue that fact. And I think that if you want development in MLK down in that area there, that we need something that to stabilize that neighborhood. And right now, there's nothing in that neighborhood that stabilizes it. You've been talking about for 20 years, and I can assure you, we'll be talking for the next 20 years. And I do not want to be holding to any other past commissioners who thought putting a police department headquarters in an industrial road off the main road is a good idea, because it's not. You give me one example where you see a police headquarters located in industrial area, it doesn't happen.
Sir, let me go ahead, Mayor, and I'm not going to kind of continue to beat this, but first of all, headquarters is not what deter crime. It's more police officers. What we need is more officers, President, and that's what I have been saying. I will continue to say, you could build it over in your district. I'm just saying, when we get more officers over here that was willing to serve, sir, that is what we need. Headquarters is not what is the thing. We need more foot patrol, we need more people there, and I'm not going to go toe-to-toe with you tonight and everything, because this is your baby. You want to get the Wawa and get whatever you want to put out there on our High Ridge Road, sir. I'm not in favor of it, and like I said before, I will continue not to vote for this here town square project, as long as you all want to try to hammer and put your police headquarters over in District 2. We, you all have pushed us, and you are continuing to push us. I'm just saying, respect where we are and give us more police officers. I don't care where you put it, but do not displace us. And if we build the police headquarters, we will get more people and more property and get more businesses to come over to the heart of Boynton. You'll get businesses to come to the heart of Boynton, sir, if you just develop it. That's all I need to say, I'm through with that.
Commissioner Casello, I'm going to ask you to stop talking. No, 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 no. It's, I'm going to ask if someone else would like to discuss.
Please.
And that's, you know, Vice Mayor Katz or Commissioner Romulus, would you like to speak? Would you rather wait for public comments, Vice Mayor, as well? All right. I'd like to wait for public comments.
Hello, good evening. Brian Fitzpatrick, 409 Northeast 1st Street. I mean, as a property owner in the heart of Boynton, I mean, I've owned property in Cherry Hill since 1991, on Martin Luther King Boulevard since 1992. Not much has really changed, very little. And I actually agree with Commissioner Casello's recommendation. I mean, perhaps not the Cottage District, maybe Ocean Breeze East. You know, maybe we put City Hall, the police station, and the fire department. I don't know how many acres are needed for all three, but, you know, we've, I was at the CRA meeting last week, and we have people coming up here and throwing out these suggestions, these offers to the city to develop, you know, CRA-owned property or a city-owned property, and they want to buy it for $10. I mean, here we have prime real estate, we can build a city facility, I mean, sell all the property down here, I mean, in this area to a developer and, but, yes, we definitely, I feel as a property owner in the heart of Boynton, that the police station up there would be a tremendous asset in developing the Martin Luther King corridor, you know. Anyhow, I really strongly ask you to reconsider that. I think it's a great idea, you know, as far as putting a hotel or a Wawa or whatever on High Ridge Road. I mean, I've, coming east on Gateway Boulevard, sometimes it's, the traffic is incredible. I have real concerns about the police being able to timely respond to an emergency when traffic is backed up in all directions, so. Anyhow, think about that. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. I'm David Merker. I live at 8 Southport in Boynton Beach. There's two parts to my statement. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with either one of you, but what I think should be done is how about asking the police chief? How about asking the police what they think is best for them? This is their job. This is their profession. It's easy for us to pontificate and illustrate what we think is right, but when you sit down with, call it the chairman of the board and the committee, they should be able to give you good advice. The other statement I'd like to make, what Commissioner McCray said, the part that has to be improved, and I totally agree with him, is helping the people. And helping the people is very simple. You need the people, the police, to walk the streets and be there. And he's pontificated and expressed this over and over again, and I think it's that important, and I thank you for your time.
Woodrow Hay, 427 North Fifth Avenue, Boynton Beach. I agree with the previous speaker and with Commissioner McCray. I just wanted to interject one point that we discussed at the time about this property, that it really does not matter where the fire, I mean, the police department is. The policemen are not at the station. They are out in the community. So you can have it at High Ridge, you can have it over here. The officers themselves are out doing their job. They just don't sit around the police department and chat. So. So I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Casello. I would, unless something has changed since the time that we discussed this item in the past, I'd like to hear from the chief what his thoughts are also. But at the time that we were discussing this, it was brought out that it really doesn't matter. We need more police officers on the street, feet on the ground, interacting with the community. Those are the kinds of things that I've seen that's made a difference. And we've done that. We've done a good job. We just need to increase it.
Good evening. Barbara Reedy, 329 Southwest 13th Avenue. I agree with Commissioner Casello. I think that from a purely economic standpoint, the decision to sell that parcel and add it to the tax rolls would only make sense. When you look at all of the other decisions that this commission has made recently as far as development, we're overdeveloping the downtown as far as I'm concerned because we want to add to the tax rolls. Well, here's a perfect opportunity to add to the tax rolls. We've sacrificed too many parcels in the Quantum area off of the tax rolls. That's supposed to be our industrial area, and we have too many charter schools and nonprofits that we've allowed to go into what should have been our industrial area over there. When you think about it, if you spend less on the police department, you'll be able to hire more police. That's just common sense. I feel safe in saying, as a member of the Forest Park neighborhood, that the last time that we had an idea to move the police department out of the downtown, there was a great hue and cry that Forest Park would like very much for the police department to remain on the eastern side of town as well. So I just think that we should sell that parcel and find a better place for the police department. We don't need a big fancy police department. As Mr. Hay said, the police aren't in the department. They're out around, so we don't need a big fancy place.
Hello. Do I have to state my name and address again? Melinda Contreras, 1743 Congress Avenue, Boynton Beach. Although I teach in Boynton, I actually don't live in Boynton. I live in Plantation. So to be fair, I really am not familiar with the setup of Boynton Beach in regards to Martin Luther King or District Two. I'm not very familiar with all of the districts. But wherever the headquarters is, I do recommend that the police have this sufficient training to de-escalate situations, because if that doesn't take place, wherever you put the headquarters, especially in a high-crimed area, you can have a disaster on your hand. That's all that I have to say.
Yeah. I'd like to, you know, speak with the police chief, if you wouldn't mind coming down.
Good evening. Jeff Katz, Police Chief.
And so knowing that you've been in Boynton Beach for a long time and being a police officer, you know, working your way up to police chief, you know, I kind of want to know your pros and cons for each site. You know, with, I guess, the Quantum Park site, you're next to the fire department, you have access to 95 very quickly and to the western areas. Whereas, you know, in the, kind of in the eastern side, you're more where you currently are, and it's more of Seacrest and Federal to get north and south of the city, because we're more of a north-south city than a east-west city. So.
Sure. I'm happy to provide some commentary on that, just to touch on the professor's comment earlier, to let you know that all of our personnel have gone through de-escalation training already. So with respect to the location, to be honest with you, there are pluses and minuses to both locations. I'm an advocate of the High Ridge site, primarily because of the fact that I've been an employee with the city for 20 years. And when we purchased the site and planned to place a police department there, I've driven by that site thousands of times, and I envision a police department built there. But I also recognize that there are other opportunities, and we don't deploy, unlike the fire service, we don't deploy from the station itself. And our personnel are mobile and in the community throughout their shift. So what I would say is what we really need is a new police station. We're woefully outgrown our current station. We're thankful for whatever station we do get, and wherever it is that you wish to place it. I'm not an urban planner, I'm a police chief. And both sites generally would meet our needs. And when I say both sites, I'm speaking more of, somebody had mentioned the Ocean Breeze East area, the High Ridge area would work. My primary concern as it relates to the building of a police station is twofold. The first is from a terrorism standpoint, how do we secure the facility? You're looking at, even if it's not a fancy station, which it's not, you're looking at a multimillion-dollar government project. And I've expressed publicly before my concerns of the vulnerability of, say, a truck bomb or something of that nature. The High Ridge site does provide us with a large measure of security, physical security. The High Ridge site also provides us some cover with respect to hurricane winds coming from the east. It gives us a bit of a barrier. And if I've got to quarter my personnel there during a natural disaster, I feel like I have an obligation to speak up and say, if we're concerned about rising sea levels, we're concerned about increased hurricane strength, we're concerned about storm surge, then I don't want my personnel being quartered in a station east of I-95. That's my own personal preference, as it relates to a storm. And as it relates to terrorism, I'm sure we could mitigate those risks at another location. Access to main thoroughfares, I think anything that has come up as a suggestion would provide sufficient access to thoroughfares.
Chief, just a quick question, a couple of quick questions. This new station, it was, my understanding, it was going to be a rated four-type building for hurricanes?
My understanding is that the structure should be a category four structure. We have discussed hardening a specific area of the building to a category five, and that area would be the area where we would quarter our employees.
So you'd feel safe in that, if that building was built on either one of those sites?
Well, there are different risks. As it relates to storm surge, it really doesn't matter what category building you've got. If you've got a flood, we saw that in Miami with Irma. If you've got a flood, those waters rise very quickly, and the harder the building, it really doesn't matter. So with respect to storm surge, no, I wouldn't feel equally comfortable. And again, we're looking at a 50-year facility. So what we have to do is we have to take a look at the best understanding of what our environment will be like, what sea levels will be like, the intensity of storms will be like, over the next 50 years. And, you know, I know that there are a lot of people out there that catastrophize things, but I, you know, I've read reports where people are concerned that Florida will be underwater in 50 years. And in that case, it wouldn't matter where the police station is, right? But I have to, you know, I have to look after the welfare of our officers and where we're going to quarter them. And the High Ridge site is, for all practical purposes, I think, a better location in that context.
Chief, you've also mentioned that the, would you agree that between the hours of, let's say, 4:30 and 6 o'clock, that High Ridge and Minor Road is a real traffic logistic problem? Would you say that? Because I travel there all the time, and it takes many red lights just to get across. Would you say that? Is that a fair statement?
I would absolutely agree with you on that, yes.
Thank you. You also said at an earlier meeting that you wanted to have community involvement in this building. You wanted it to be thriving with the community. I believe that's, probably paraphrasing a little bit of that, but you wanted to be, like, community-oriented. Could you tell me how, by placing it up on High Ridge in an industrial area, how that would interact with the community?
That would not be interacting with the community. We do little interaction with the community in our current police station where it's currently located, and much of that has to do with space constraints.
But that was one of your, that was one of your goals with this new station, correct?
Absolutely. It's the hallmark of all modern police facilities, to have a gathering place for members of the community to come to their police department and interact with their personnel.
Well, let me ask you this question. Would the community be more apt to visit, for whatever reason, is the police station down built on the east side of the city or up on High Ridge in the industrial area?
I can't speculate.
I do.
Any other questions from the board? So I guess one of the other questions that I've had that we haven't really discussed is that, how many employees actually does the police station hold during the day, the nine to five? Because, you know, the uniformed officers is what we normally see. These are the, you know, police staff that we do not see. Is this mostly correct?
We have 215 employees in the police department. A majority of them work during the daytime hours. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, no. How many are currently in the police station between nine to five that aren't uniformed officers?
I'm not comfortable giving out that information in a public forum.
Okay, then that's fine. I'm sorry.
No problem.
And so then I guess that's my questions. Any other commissions for Chief Katz? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. You know, the interesting thing that I have is that Commissioner Casello says that he knows of three buyers ready for that property, and they're willing to offer so much money. And it's, that's not normally how the city governments work, where they speak to one city commissioner promising a lot of money, where if something goes wrong and two back out, then we're stuck with not what we speculate. The fact of the matter is, is that we, you know, before Hurricane and after Irma, I went and checked in on the emergency operations center. And I think having the fire station, the police station close together is the best and safest for the city. And that is what the goal of where we place this police station, what is the safest for the entire city, not just what District Two, not just in District Two. And then, I forgot that last one. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add to what you just alluded to, I sat in the EOC Center both for Matthew and Irma, and I can tell you, the operation's up there when it's smooth as silk. So I don't see the correlation between having a police department across the driveway from the fire department, how that correlates to better safety. You know, we've talked about this being a community-type building, and the chief has alluded to that, that he wants the community involved. Police, you know, it's just about more, you know, police officers riding around on segways. That's not what this is all about. It's not about more foot patrols or police presence. It's about making that inner feeling of safety, having a public safety building in your community. You know, it's just out of sight, out of mind. And, you know, Chief made a statement, and I thought it pretty, not funny, but, you know, you said years ago that they had picked that parcel for the police department. You've driven by it many times, and you've always pictured the police department there. So let's think outside the box. That's what happens sometimes with the city, that some of the decisions that the city has made in the past, we don't think outside that box. We don't think what can be. You know, just because I've always visioned it there, doesn't mean that's the right decision. So I would ask this commission, you know, we owe it to the taxpayers to continue to build this tax base here, if we're going to continue to pay for the services that we need to pay for here, that get the community involved. You know, and I'll predict this, and, you know, this MLK Boulevard corridor, however you want to label this thing, you're going to be talking about the same things the next 10 commissioners who sit up here, after we're long gone. We've experienced it already. Not one developer's come in there without the, without TIF money and tax credits. It's the only way they want to build anything on the MLK corridor. I suggest to you that if we give the residents of this great city a sense of security, knowing that we made an investment in their community to keep them safe, that we are going to get a lot more responses than we have in the past.
All right. I'm going to, before Commissioner McCray goes, I want to ask if any other commissioners on the board would like to speak.
I wouldn't mind going last, just to hear it out.
You want to go second to last, then?
No.
Well, I don't really have a choice. I will go now. I will speak on this issue just simply based on what I've heard from certain constituents and residents who live in the areas that we are discussing. I've spoken to several individuals from District Two, and their personal sentiment and feelings is that they do not want a police station in their backyard. They want police presence, but they don't necessarily need a police station. That being said, again, we can have a police station be placed anywhere. We don't necessarily have the dispatch situation where you have our firefighters, for example, going from their headquarters out to their location or wherever they're needed. They're simply going to be in the local areas and patrolling, and as called, as needed, they go. So the positioning of the police headquarters really, really doesn't matter, nor does it play a role or a factor in its site or location in the city. In addition to that, the feeling that I have in terms of a site like Ocean Breeze East or Cottage District or any of those potential parcels being used as the police headquarters, you are now taking potential opportunities for housing, for affordable, attainable, or market-rate housing, and now placing a government property which will not generate any tax rolls to the city and putting it there in the middle of a residential district. I would rather put a police station in a commercial district or an industrial district on High Ridge, rather than putting it smack dab in the middle of a residential district and, you know, changing the outlay of that particular region. So again, this all goes back to, we as commissioners up here, our job is to listen to our constituents. Our job is to hear them out and understand what they're asking us for. And the sentiment of the residents in District Two, which I've heard from numerous of them, is that they don't want that particular building there. Having said that, I really just feel that we do not want to start this process of having government entities or buildings placed in a residential district that's cornered on all parts. And Chief came up here and briefly mentioned regarding terror and regarding different things. There's certain protections that the High Ridge parcel gives our police station that putting it in either Ocean Breeze East or in Cottage District does not. So I look at the safety aspect, I look at the just strategic positioning, and just in terms of fact of positioning, it just makes more sense to be there on the High Ridge. So I understand the argument of prices and potentially being able to make millions of dollars from the High Ridge site. But again, as stated by the mayor, I have not heard or been approached by any of these potential wooers to the city of their intent to come and place that development, Wawa or whatever it may be, in that site. And if they were serious about that, then I would have potentially expected to get or hear out these proposals more, instead of just from one particular commissioner. I feel like if they were serious about these proposals, they would have either approached us as a commission or approached this board in a public setting to express that interest. So had they maybe done that sooner, maybe we could have had this discussion. But I feel that this is a road that we have started going down, and I do not want to obstruct the path of Town Square that we've started and to halt that simply because of some people who potentially are seeing an opportunity that is potentially closing for them. So that is my sentiment, and that is where I will end. Thank you.
Great. Next.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say, for District Two, we already have the Public Works complex already in the middle of a neighborhood, and it was promised to us years ago that they was trying to find property to move Public Works out so that we would was trying to find property to move Public Works out so that we would have more room, you know, to expand in that community. That's number one. Second of all, we keep hearing the word "community involvement." And I don't know where people are getting on the idea, you know, if you put it on High Ridge Road, if you have a meeting, the community cannot get there. We all have automobiles, we have form of transportation, we don't have to walk, and we make it our business to get there for a meeting if that meeting concerns us. That's all I need to say. Horse and pony days are over with. Thank you.
All right. For Vice Mayor, I'd just like to say is that, you know, speaking of the MLK corridor, thinking that a police station is going to bring development there, I kind of disagree with that. I think having the affordable housing, the workforce housing, having people using the commercial activities there is what's going to make that area strive. And I think that by the time I'm done running for, being in office, that there will be commercial activity over there on MLK. Vice Mayor? And then we'll go for the final comments.
Yeah, I feel like, I made my position clear. We've discussed this a number of times over the past year and change. I don't, I don't disagree with, with anything fundamentally that Commissioner Casello said. I've made those exact same arguments throughout our past discussions. In terms of, of tax value generated, it's no question, building it on a low-value residential area would forego a tiny amount of tax value for the city, whereas building it on the high ridge site will forego a substantial amount, because it's a multimillion-dollar site. With regards to, you know, police coverage, I think that it's clear that obviously police roam the city in their, their various, you know, districts, but the fact that they all have to come and go from the police station means that the location of the police station is an increased police activity area. I just, you know, we've had this discussion numerous times. Historically, myself and Commissioner Casello were the only two people who entertained the possibility of putting this in the northeast area. Recently, there was a potential third, you know, party that was willing to entertain that type of vote, but, but, you know, it doesn't sound that way now. As much as I agree with Commissioner Casello and basically everything he said, the factor for me right now is time. As time has gone by, we've made a commitment to Ocean Breeze East to be developed into affordable housing. At this point, you know, whether it happens or it doesn't happen, I can't back off of that position. So for me, Ocean Breeze East is, it will be affordable housing, or it will over time be nothing, but I can't personally vote to put anything there. With regards to the Cottage District, there's really not any houses there, maybe one or two remaining, four, on, on a parcel that could potentially hold a couple dozen houses. So I don't see that it displaces anybody in particular, but it's just, it's time. It, you know, there was a time and, and point in time to vote for this to not be on high ridge, and for me, that, that time has expired. So I agree 100% with all the, the valid arguments that Commissioner Casello said, but I just can't, I can't support it at this time, because the, the conditions have changed with regards to alternative options, our, our proximity to the development timeline for Town Square and to, and to do that. It's not, it's not that necessarily, I'm not concerned with burdening our staff or the developers, that's their job to, to work with what we give them. I just don't, I don't see an alternative, you know, obtaining support. If there was a third vote up here for this, I could, I can entertain it, obviously, but it, based on comments so far, it doesn't appear that way. So, so I can't support it at this time, even though I personally believe it to be the best decision.
Final comments? Commissioner Casello, would you like to begin?
Yeah. To Commissioner Ramis's remarks that, that the land on high ridge is more valuable, valuable square footage than, you know, we're, we're entertaining a building down on the, for the Cottage District, where we just got a letter of intent, of interest, rather, the other day, $10, plus TIF money that we're going to end up paying them to put these houses in. It serves no tax purpose for the city Odyssey IRA real tax monies. And as far as your comment on, some of you've made that I'm the only commissioner, okay? This high ridge parcel wasn't up for grabs. This city administration made it known to all of us not to gum up the works of Town Square project by bringing it, by bringing in the, you know, high ridge parcel. Now, I think every one of you might have been told that by our city manager at some point. Do not mess this up. High ridge is where the police department's got to go. We can't slow down the process. And that's all I'm asking, to take a step back and look at the overall picture here.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
Commissioner Casello, I will, I will emphatically agree with you that that high ridge site is potentially the best place for us to develop and turn into a commercial hub for, for a hotel or whatnot. But again, as, as I've stated, I, I don't see the alternative. It's not going to be Ocean Breeze East, because we've already committed to that. It's definitely not going to be Cottage District, because again, you are landlocked by a bunch of homes, and that is not the place to place a police station. And then what other alternatives are there? So I definitely am, am and still, was and still am open. As Vice Mayor Katz alluded, that third vote could, potentially would have been me, but I don't see the viable options for that location here on the east side. We have that parcel that potentially could have been it, but we don't have a seller who's willing to entertain the, the notion to, to buy or to sell to the city in order to open up that parcel to potentially make it the police station. We have that other station, that, that other parcel that's next to the fire department, the new proposed fire department location. But again, that seller is also potentially not willing, or the timeframe that it would take to negotiate a sale would not be viable for the project that we have in place, that the train is already out of the station and moving very quickly along for Town Square. You know, this has been a project that's in the works for a very long time, and I believe taking the time to think outside the box, as you've alluded to several times, the, the time, as, as Vice Mayor Katz has stated, has passed. We, we, if we had these, again, these proposals in the past, and we've had, we had other viable options to relocate the police station, this definitely could have been a viable conversation. But at this point in time where we are now, this is not the, the potential direction that I want to take this city or this commission necessarily in. So that being said, I'm going to stick with my position, which is I would prefer to have the police station placed at the high ridge site.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I had a discussion with CRA Director Mike Simon, and I think, not to speak for him, but I think that we both agreed that the Cottage District could entertain a police department there. We already own the land, so it'd be no delaying of what we need to do to get a police station open, just for the record.
Thank you. No, I forgot what I was going to say. Yeah. For me, it was, you know, Commissioner Casello right, is right. The fact of the matter is, is that the land at the, the high ridge site is worth 2.5 million is what the property appraiser has the assessed value of it. But I also know that Boynton Beach has increased in property value for the past six years, and well over 5% each year. So, you know, the property values are increasing, so for the whole city. And just trying to make one parcel more valuable, I think, you know, it would deter from the rest of the city. I think that we want to have our downtown area to be on east of 95, along Ocean Avenue, and to build that corridor where all, all along our CRA is, from, you know, Woolbright and Federal to Boynton Beach Boulevard and Federal, all the way out west to the Boynton Beach Art District. We want to have that as our downtown area. And in order to have that, I think we need to have the affordable housing and the workforce housing that we are planning to do, that we've always planned to do. And I like to, the fact that we are growing very fast, and it's exciting to be in Boynton Beach right now, because we are moving along with the plan that we started when the three of us got elected. So I'm looking forward to keeping with the, putting the, keeping with what we're doing and putting the police station over at the high ridge spot. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, not only do we own the land for the Cottage District, we also own the land for the High Ridge Road, too. For the record, I was not told by the city commissioner not to gunk up, whatever the word was used, this Town Square project, and no developer spoke to me about putting anything over on the high ridge site. That concludes my comments for tonight.
Vice Mayor? Any final comments?
Yeah, but it's going to be tangent to this, so, you know, it appears to be a 4-1 vote, that's that. But, you know, in this discussion and the talk about increasing security and the needs of the northeastern portion of the city, I would request that this board request from the police chief a plan of his design to address those issues, because this, this comes up on a regular basis, because there is terrible violent crime, usually in that particular area of the city, not exclusively, but, and, you know, I, I hear individuals come in and say that they don't want the police station there, but they want more police there. But when the police are going to be going there, they don't want the police harassing anybody or arresting anybody. So I don't, I don't see a solution to the problem that we've, we've hit on in this discussion, and it's a serious problem. The other thing that I hear constantly is, well, the community will handle it. With all due respect to that community and any other community, northeast, northwest, south, whatever, Boynton, no group of civilians is capable of dealing with hardened violent drug crime. So, you know, I'll use this opportunity, I said it once in the past, there needs to be a discussion. I think it needs to be fueled by a, a design put forth by, by the chief to tell us what he needs and what he would envision to address that issue, because the police station's not going to go there. The police presence there, even though there's constant talk of wanting more, there's contradictory talk of not wanting any police interference with the community activities, and people aren't capable of dealing with this. So that, that's my request right now. Again, this appears, you know, the high ridge situation appears to be resolved by virtue of the, the comments, but at a date that, that he's capable and fits the agenda, I would like to see the chief put together a plan and a cost estimate of what he would need, and if it's expensive, and if we're serious about addressing the crime in that portion of the city, then we need to figure out a way to pay for it, because we sit here and we talk about this all the time, and I have not heard a single actual plan in a reality-based world that is going to address that, that problem. And I want to see the development happen in northeast Boynton. I believe, as Commissioner McCray has said, is if we develop some things, it will snowball into a broader development of that portion of the city. But as Commissioner Casello said, nobody is coming in to build anything in that area if there is a fear that people are being shot on the corner of that property on a regular basis. So that, that's my request, that we allow the chief to craft a plan at, at a time and date of his choosing, and he obviously can comment on this, but I want to know what he needs, and I want to give it to him so that he can address that issue, because, you know, they're doing everything they can, but if more resources is the need, then I want to allocate the funds for those resources, because I'm, I'm tired of hearing about it, which means the people who live in that portion of the city got to be tired of living it, and we're up here to solve problems, so that's what I want.
And Vice Mayor, before you begin, Chief Katz, I know that we have a lobbyist for ATS for the city of Boynton Beach, so I'm going to go reach out to him to see what American Traffic Solutions can do to help us out with the cameras moving forward.
Mayor, just for a point of information, I've asked the city mayor to put that on a future agenda. I don't know if she's put it on yet.
All right. Well, we'll put that on there for later then. Yes?
Again, Jeff Katz, police chief, I just wanted to, to touch on the vice mayor's comment. I appreciate the support. I know the men and women of the department appreciate the support. I would like to share with you that we're making a lot of end roads in bridging gaps in the community with respect to historical issues of trust. We had a homicide a couple of weeks ago. Before my command staff notified me of the homicide, a stakeholder in the community texted me, and not only shared with me the name of the victim, but who the word on the street was that committed the homicide. And our investigation ended up revealing, independent of that, that that was the person who committed the homicide. We had him in custody within a week. So we're making a great deal of, of end roads. Technical resources and money thrown at this problem aren't, aren't going to address this issue. We do appreciate the support, and I'll be more than glad to furnish a list. But I want to keep it realistic, and I want to be honest about it, because I think we have a, we have a responsibility, a community of interest, if you will, to handle this in a reasonable fashion. And I don't think that a program is going to address it. I think it's more community engagement, and we're continuing to do that with the CRA. And, and I think that's helping a lot. But I don't think that money, yeah, we definitely could use more staffing, sure, and that will help. But I will share with you that during our hurricane deployment, without getting too much into the operations of, of our, of our department, we had an excess of 70 officers working, and we had a homicide. So it's not necessarily the number of people we have working at any particular time, it's the actions of the community. And I think it's creating that environment where the community and the police are one and not separate. That is what's going to, and that's the, that would be the plan I would submit to you. We have to bond with the community, and the community has to feel a sense of responsibility toward keeping itself safe, and we join with them in that, in that responsibility. So that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. All right.
Well, I do want to take a second to thank the chief for his honesty and his true sentiment on the situation, because I know it's very easy to say, well, let's throw some money on the situation, and hopefully it resolves itself, but you are dealing with a situation that has perpetuated itself for centuries on end, and we are now simply getting to the point where we are finally able to start looking at the situation, at the problem head-on. I think this is where we finally are in our history here, especially, you know, in Boynton Beach, and as a country as a whole, we're finally looking at the situation head-on and trying to make end roads, trying to make, you know, create, open up lines of communication where people can feel that they can trust. And we've had situations that have eroded that trust in the very recent past as well. So again, these, this is not simply an issue that we can just throw money at, or we can say, well, let's put a police station right here in the middle of this district, and that'll solve this issue. There's a lot more that needs to be done, and this will be something that takes time. So I think the chief, for his honesty and for not, you know, taking that easy layup and, and just saying, yeah, yeah, we want money, that, that could have been the easy solution or, or acceptance to that offer. But again, he understands that this is more of an issue that needs to go more deep and not just be a superficial resolution through just throwing money at the issue. So I, I believe that this commission has, has an obligation and a duty to continue to work and create the pathways of communication that will allow for our constituents to trust our police officers and vice versa, for our police officers to continue to build the, the relationships and the continued communication that will allow for them also to have a, a great set of, of eyes and ears within the community so that there can be a back and forth that allows for growth and further expansion of, of just a great city, of a great community for us to all live in here in Boynton Beach.
Mayor, my comment is to the chief, I'd just like to say, chief, to you, your department, the men and women in blue, I want to just tell you all, thank you, no matter what happens in District Two, I get a text message. You all alert me of what is going on. I don't have to hear it secondhand, so I do appreciate that, at least you all are communicating. When my phone rings, I can tell them, yes, we are aware of this. Yeah, we have reached out, the community is reaching out to help you all. Just like you said, we trust you all now more than we trust you all before. Thank you, sir.
And I just, I'd just like to, chief, you, you do a great job no matter where we put this building, and I understand that. It's just about the logistics of it. You know, and just my closing remark is that if you look at the, how some of these less fortunate neighborhoods have jump-started, they're either put a public safety building, either a fire station, a police station, or a courthouse. And I would use Delray. They put that firehouse down at the other end of Atlantic Avenue, look what the area has done. It's just, it's, we've got to think more than, we've got to get that laser focus, so take the blinders off, get out of the box, and think for the next 20 years. Thank you.
All right. And before we move on, I know that one person from the public wanted to have a comment. Is that okay for the board? All right.
Mayor, when he's done, would you conclude this agenda item with a motion of some type, please?
That was the last comment, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come up yet again. I mean, I did, the chief touched on something about being approachable, and, and thank you, Commissioner Casello, for pointing out Delray, because Delray did indeed put the police station out on West Atlantic Avenue years ago, right next. It just so happens, they just built the new hotel right across the street from that. But one of the positive benefits... But one of the positive benefits from having that police station on West Atlantic Avenue is it has made it sort of a community police station. You know, I strongly disagree that it's going to be, you know, an approachable station out there on High Ridge Road. You know, you need a station that people can just walk to from the community because the reality is, the majority of residents in District 2, to my knowledge, do not have, the higher percentage do not have a vehicle, you know? So, having the ability just to walk into the station, I mean, it's just tremendous, tremendous benefit to the community. And, you know, I would please ask you to reconsider one more time. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. May I have a motion to, Commissioner Casello, would you like to form a motion?
I would like to put the motion forward that we reconsider the High Ridge parcel for the police department and look at the other alternatives that were discussed tonight.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
Nay.
Motion is denied four to one. And then, next, we have the future agenda items. Commissioner Casello, you wanted to put a future agenda item for speaking with ATS?
Mayor, let me ask a question before we move forward. Have we considered now that the police station will be located on High Ridge Road?
That's it.
Thank you.
I had a discussion, I had mentioned it to the city manager, Laverre, and I just had a discussion the other day with Tim Howard to, as you know, when ATS was up here selling their product to put the red light cameras back on, they made some promises to us as far as license plate readers. I think they'd mentioned like 14, 15 license plate readers. I would like to have them come and talk to us. When are they going to implement that? And I believe they used the word "free" at that particular time to sell their product. So, I would like to have that discussion and see when these are going to be coming into the city and where would they be located.
Okay. So, I'm guessing that is a motion to put on the future agenda items for the city to talk with American Traffic Solutions.
And also, just to add on to that, a camera, not only that, but lights on northeast 17th Avenue as well to be when they come to talk to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, do I have a second?
Lights or cameras? I'm sorry.
We can just have a broad topic.
Yep.
We can talk about details.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll put that as item JK for next meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.